11, 2022, Ashkosh Common Council. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Mugurauer?
Here.
Mayor Palmary?
Here.
Right, Councilmember Miller will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that we have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it looks like we have an introduction this evening, new staff. Welcome, Jason Posma, Economic Development Services Manager.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Jason Posma. He is our new Economic Development Services Manager in Community Development. Jason comes from Odeaguami County and has a very diverse background in real estate, private development, owning his own business, and municipal planning. So, we're really excited to have Jason onboard. He's been here since late December, and we're looking forward to bringing him in on all the exciting projects we have going on here in the city.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And this evening, we have a workshop on the Clearwell project updates.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lynda Moore. I work with Jacobs Engineering. I'm the project manager for the design team. And this evening, presentation's loaded up. Our agenda in this workshop is to provide the Common Council with an update brief on the project, review with you the public comments and questions that we've received over the last few months, and the city's responses to those comments. A brief look at next steps and schedule for the project, and answer your questions. If it's more helpful to you to stop and ask questions along the way, I am comfortable with that. So, the last time we were meeting with the City Common Council was late in May of 2021. And our purpose then was to provide the council members with background information on the project. Since then, the design team has produced 60% complete design documents that were submitted to the two regulators that need to approve this project prior to construction, namely, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Recall, the reason we were submitting 60% complete design documents is because we were requesting approval of design criteria for the pump stations in the project, and we were seeking approval to pre-purchase replacement ozone equipment. Based on those 60% complete design documents, we prepared an updated construction cost estimate this fall. The estimated construction costs have gone up about 30% since 2017, largely due to COVID-related increases in the costs of labor, materials, and equipment. In October, the Department of Public Works and the Water Utility hosted a public neighborhood meeting on the project. And since that meeting, the city has been collecting public questions and comments, and preparing technical responses, and posting those to the city's website. So, during that meeting in October, there were over 40 people in attendance. There was a presentation similar to this, and a pretty extensive question and answer and discussion session. And then, interested meeting attendees were invited to tour the water filtration plant. There was a wide variety of comments and questions asked, and generally, they fall, most of them fall into these following categories. They're related to the appearance or shape of the water storage tanks, the use and location of water stored at the site, use of the filtration plant property, the parcel, and use of adjacent Lake Shore Drive. Now, the next eight or 10 slides have a lot of information on them, words and numbers, but there's even more details posted on the city's website. So, regarding the questions about the height of the structures and whether the tank's heights could be reduced, or whether the tanks could be buried. To comply with the current Wisconsin State Administrative Code, the new finished water, the potable water, storage tanks, and the pump station to convey drinking water out to the community need to have floor elevations that are two feet above the local groundwater table level and the floodplain level. When we locate these facilities at that level, they have a higher visual vertical impact. The heights of the new tanks and the pump station are comparable to the existing three-story main filtration plant building that's on-site. Each water storage tank, and there's two, because periodically, these tanks by law have to be removed from service, inspected, and over their life cycle will need repairs periodically. Each storage tank is sized for 1 million gallons, and that water is used to meet functional, operational requirements at the filtration plant and to meet customer service requirements. The tank's diameters, as we show in the 60% design documents and the two example possible visuals of how these facilities could look after construction, the diameters of the circular tanks were based on the widths of the existing clearwells. And the reason why we selected that as the diameter for the tank is so that we could reuse the lower portions of the existing clearwells to facilitate construction and provide a more stable setting for the new tanks and pump stations' foundations. The visuals that you see on this slide are the same ones that Common Council saw in May. Again, on this topic of the tanks and their height, and whether they can be buried, per the state regulations, earth covering of reservoirs, which is what is the situation currently with the clearwells at the filter plant, earth covering of reservoirs should be avoided where possible. And if a community decides to locate a reservoir in a buried location, that buried location should be such that the floor of the storage tank, even in its buried spot, is located above the groundwater level in the floodplain. When the administrative code further goes on to prescribe that if you did choose to locate drinking water storage tanks and the gravity piping that conveys water in and out of the storage tanks, and the wet wells for pump stations that convey the water from the plant out to the community, if you chose to put them down in where the groundwater is, that you need to provide secondary containment, watertight secondary containment for those structures to help mitigate the possibility of groundwater contamination to the drinking water. The, if that design approach was taken, these double-walled buried assets would create unique design challenges. There are no community water systems that store water in a double-walled tank in the state of Wisconsin. The DNR has not approved this type of facility. There would be challenges during construction because of the location here of this facility so close to Lake Winnibago and the volume and the level of groundwater that needs to be managed during construction. And then, over the life of these double-walled assets, the city would need to maintain that interstitial space between the water-holding tank and the secondary containment to make sure it's dry. So, there would be monitoring for moisture, and then going in and making any repairs that were needed over the life of the assets. The public had wide-ranging comments about the appearance of the facilities. Some thought these structures were an opportunity to present art. Some comments preferred round or curved kind of structures. Some comments were expressing a preference for straight rectangular or square tanks. So, following receiving that input, we responded that the 60% design concepts that are shown here were based primarily on input that the city received from the public in 2017 when this project was first in design and moving toward construction. And those include stone veneer and brick to match existing facilities and kind of blend with the neighborhood. But those building finish products can be changed to meet current community preferences. Rectangular tanks at grade will work just as well as circular tanks. Rectangular tanks could be larger in their footprint, could take up more space on the site. And when they are larger in area, they can be shorter in wall height. Square tanks would be constructed using cast-in-place concrete, which is more expensive than the type of concrete construction used for the circular tanks. The circular tanks are pre-stress concrete, so it's the kind of concrete that's, components are made in the factory, kind of like you see warehouses and apartments and businesses going up these days utilizing pre-stress concrete because it's lower cost, there's fewer joints, and it can be constructed in a shorter period of time. Following receipt of public input, we prepared some concepts to compare at-grade rectangular tanks with the at-grade circular tanks, and then also looking at partially buried, double-walled rectangular tanks. So, there's a lot of numbers on this chart, and it shows the relative sizes. And it's organized from left to right, the lowest-cost tank option in terms of construction and life cycle costs, moving right to the highest-cost tank alternative. And this picture, it's a brand-new one. It's not in your packet because it was suggested yesterday that it would be helpful to have in the presentation. The gray silhouette that you see on the left-hand side is the elevation image of the existing water filtration plant. And then, on the right side are the three different alternatives that we've looked at in the last few weeks, with the circular tanks at the top, then the at-grade rectangular and square tanks, and then finally, a double-walled, partially buried arrangement. In addition to doing conceptual layouts, we prepared some conceptual cost estimates, again with at-grade circular on the left, at-grade rectangular in the middle, and then the partially buried, double-walled, square and rectangular tanks on the right side. The first column, the at-grade circular cost estimates, are based on nearly 300 pages of engineered drawings and over 1,000 pages of technical specs, and are a defensible engineer's estimate of cost for the fall of 2021. The second column is based on conventional construction methods, which we're very familiar with, designing and operating cast-in-place concrete-water-holding tanks, and based on probably 10% complete design concepts. And then last, this secondary containment type of structure is based on engineered concepts, our knowledge of the site, subsurface conditions. I'd like to draw your attention to the first tiny font note at the bottom of this table. We have learned from working with the Public Service Commission that the Public Service Commission allows reasonable costs for new water infrastructure to be included in water rates. And reasonable costs related to aesthetics can also be included in water rates. If costs are deemed to be unreasonable, spending an excessive amount to make water infrastructure be more than what it needs to be to fulfill its purpose, there is a possibility that the Public Service Commission will direct those improvements, those supplemental features of the project, to be funded by sources other than water rates. That has happened before in the state of Wisconsin. There were many questions about the use of the water treatment plant site. This is an aerial photo, and you can see there's portions of the site that are paved or covered with lawn. And it would be natural to wonder what's the intended use, or how are those areas being used today? So, moving from the west, which would be the left-hand side, Lyndy, toward the lake, there's a long, orange rectangle that's land that's set aside for when the city needs to expand the treatment plant. Today, there are two parallel treatment trains to treat the water, and there's space on the site for the addition of a third. The next bigger rectangle that's encompassing a paved area on the surface that's used for chemical delivery, large trucks positioning themselves and getting through the site to safely offload the chemicals used in the water treatment process. And below ground, what can't be seen is a pretty intense network of buried raw water intake pipes, finished water transmission mains, and large duct banks used to distribute electrical power to different facilities on-site. The third smaller, orange rectangle is space set aside in a logical location to add future ultraviolet light disinfection capability at the plant. Why UV? Because UV, or UV and the addition of a little hydrogen peroxide is extremely good at removing bacterial contaminants, algal toxins, pharmaceuticals that find their way into our water supply, and personal care products. Those four parameters that I just ticked off are all on the list, the National EPA List of Emerging Contaminants of Concern. Not regulated yet today, but it's good to be thinking about future regulations. And then, that last blue rectangle is the area currently occupied by the Clearwell and one of the high-liv pump stations. So, regarding how water is used on-site, stored on-site, the number-one use of this water is for backwashing filters, cleaning filters. The city at this facility has four dual-media filters and four granular activated carbon filters. And these filters, when they're backwashed, need 300,000 gallons to be clean. And in the summer, when the filters get dirtier faster because of warmer water temperatures and more organics in the lake, it's not uncommon for the city to have to backwash four filters in a day, back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back. And the rate at which backwash supply is conveyed from the storage tanks to the filters is really high, 14,000 gallons per minute. Compare that number with an average annual flow out of the plant of 4,000 gallons per minute. So, not only is it a lot of water, it's got to be sent to the filter under greens quickly, and clean the filters, and all that wastewater is processed on-site and sent ultimately to the wastewater treatment plant for disposal. If the water storage tanks were located remote from the filtration plant site, then to provide the same level of reliability in treatment that the plant has today, the city would need to construct two large diameter pipelines, parallel pipelines, to serve these new tanks in their remote location, and two parallel pipelines to bring the water from those tanks back to the backwash supply pumps located in the basement of the filter plant. And if the hydraulics were such that they affected those pumps, the city would have to also replace those pumps. And they're the biggest pumps in the water utility, and right now, today, still have plenty of service life in them available. And then, I think, as mentioned during the public information meeting, if any water utility assets are located off-site, there would have to be a series of feasibility studies done and alternatives looked at in order to get through the DNR and the Public Service Commission's review and approval processes. This is not, this is intended to not be a not really easy image to look at. This is the southeast corner of the plant. It's showing a portion of the red eastern property line, and then the southern property line along Washington. And the black heavy outlines are the existing clearwells and then some pump stations. All those light gray lines, those are process pipes. Those are finished water transmission mains, raw water intakes, backwash supply piping, large electrical duct banks. So, when people see areas that are under roadway or under lawn, there's a number of critical and relatively expensive assets that are located below ground. When I look at this site as a drinking water professional, I say, "This is a small site." And clearly, people thought that back in the late '90s when the filter plant was being designed. That's a three-story treatment plant. It's not very common. Usually, they're one or two stories. But the filter plant site is landlocked. It doesn't have a place to expand. So, today, most of the areas are occupied. The assets that aren't planned to be replaced in the project, a lot of these, including a lot of this piping, still have a long service life left in them. So, if things are moved around on-site and major changes were made to how it would be configured, the city would invariably be walking away from assets that still have service life. There were questions about landscaping and screening the new facilities with trees or other structures. And the 60% complete design documents include landscaping along Washington, which is comparable to what's there now, pardon me, and extending that north along Lake Shore Drive. Water utilities in the United States are critical, one of the 14 critical sectors that are umbrellaed under the Department of Homeland Security. And as such, water utilities need to follow the guidance that's published by Homeland Security and the regulations related to water utilities' risk and resiliency that are promulgated by the EPA. So, that means the water treatment plant site has to have a perimeter fence and has to have controlled gates. That means that landscaping in close proximity of the fence usually follows the standards in environmental design for crime prevention. We don't have trees overgrowing the fences so people can crawl up a tree and jump on-site. We don't have a lot of shrubs that people can hide behind. We also, on the site, try not to put plants, any kind of plants, on top of critical pipelines, whether they're finished water transmission mains or raw water intakes. And one of the, part of the conversation and the comments during the public meeting and following that were related to Lake Shore Drive, and could improvements be made outside the fence of the treatment plant on Lake Shore Drive to make it more pedestrian-friendly, or bike-friendly, or more green? And all of those things can be considered. They would just need to be planned and designed and bid under a separate contract. No reason why there can't be collaboration on that at this point, but we need to do what we can to comply with our regulatory constraints on the property site and work in a way that's complementary with adjacent areas. Okay, this is the last slide before opening the floor to questions. It's a slide that City Manager Roloff and Assistant Director of Public Works, Godey, and I collaborated on last week. And it's kind of a combination, look ahead of what we'll be doing technically and what we'll be doing to keep the city informed over the calendar year. So, we have heard from the Public Service Commission that they have received our documentation. They've already submitted one data request for supplemental information, which we responded to in December. And they have recently communicated that they're interested in setting up a public hearing in March of this year. And in anticipation of that public hearing, we expect in the next few months to be focusing on gathering input from the community and being, and preparing for that hearing, the agenda of which we have not yet received. And it was our intention to come back and talk with Common Council in February, potentially the February 8th meeting, about the project and the storage tanks. Following the public hearing process with the Public Service Commission, we would move into preparing the technical specifications and the procurement documentation for the replacement ozone equipment, and work on getting that equipment pre-purchased so that information about that equipment can be used in the final design later this year. This spring, we would also like to set up a more formal stakeholder committee or community advisory group on the aesthetics, the architectural finishes of the structure, the landscaping both on the plant site and off-site, so that when the final design team rolls back onto the project, all of those criteria with respect to aesthetics have been determined. We hope to complete final design by the fall. Then, the project, as it was in 2017, would be submitted to a planning commission. You may recall, we met with them in May in 2021, the same month we met with you. And we would also go through the City of Oshkosh Site Plan Review Process. So, ultimately, those, landscaping is a high-touch area for Planning Commission and for Site Plan Review. So, anything that was proposed by a community advisory group would obviously have to be reviewed and approved. reviewed and approved by them. Our target is to have construction bid documents available by the end of the year. And I thank you for your time, and we have the floor open for questions.
We'll go to Westville first.
The area in the future expansion to the west and then the southern portion, there's a smaller area on the space for future UV disinfection for handling emerging contaminants of concern. Are we pretty confident that that is going to be large enough for dealing with that?
Yes. UV reactors have really come a long way in their technology. And in the drinking water industry, the standard approach is to use inline UV reactors. These are, if you can picture it, pipe spools with UV lamps in them, ballasts. They give the water a suntan and inactivate the pathogens or bust apart those man-made compounds. And you basically need space for straight runs of pipe. And it has to be hydraulically sized to meet the rated capacity of the facility.
Thank you.
Others? Does the member have questions? Councilmember Ford.
Well, thank you. Very nice job. A lot of the questions that I had were answered by your presentation. I know back at the previous hearing, we had directed the city manager to come back with some specific options. So I definitely appreciate you guys making good on that promise. The third option there, where we would put them underground, so we know that we will deal with the cost later, but the DNR process, what would that look like? I know it's never been approved here in Wisconsin.
Yes. And after the public information, I specifically called the DNR reviewer. And he said to me that the DNR, he has learned in the last year, the DNR does not grant variances to the administrative code. What they would do in a case like this is review the technical design and the plans for maintenance and maintaining that containment, that dry containment space. And they would need to come to a determination that that design approach was as protective to public health, as good at meeting the intent of the code as what they spell out directly.
So is it fair to say that's the option with the most unknown?
That is correct, not only with respect to getting it permitted, but with respect to how to construct it and how to be taking care of, you know, water sensors that are in this interstitial space and replacing them and then repairing cracks. I mean, nothing against the concrete industry, but that old adage, if you don't want concrete to break, don't take it out of the bag. You know, that's why we put in joints and water stops and everything to allow that material to move, but it will crack with time.
Yeah, I have a two-year-old driveway that agrees with you on that. And nobody to call about it. So one of the emails that came in, mentioned or asked, really said that the tanks are larger than they need to be as proposed. And I guess, is that accurate?
The city undertook a study in 2014 when planning was underway for the Marion Road Water Tower replacement. And that study looked exhaustively at what's the right amount of storage for Oshkosh to have? And the answer back then, seven, eight years ago, is still a good answer today. And that is, it's considered a best practice to have about a volume of storage that's equivalent to the community's average day demand. So your average day demand is 6.25, 6.5 million gallons per day. And you have 4.25 up in the air in towers, and you'll have two at the plant. So there isn't a hard and fast law. This is just best practices coming out of AWA, the American Waterworks Association, and the U.S. EPA.
So you have a logic there. Sorry, am I monopolizing here?
I got a couple more behind you. If you have follow-up questions, will you yield?
I do have more, yeah.
Okay. Can we move down the line?
Yeah.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Councilmember Ford, excellent questions. You took a couple of mine. I promised there's going to be a question at the end of this, but there's going to be some commentary here. It's fair to say that this site has significant constraints, right? We're landlocked. We've got significant underground resources and infrastructure that would be imprudent and unwise to move, could be moved, but very expensive and still within its, still has plenty of lifecycle left in it. Constraints regarding safety and security, obviously, the world we live in nowadays, you touched on it towards the end in terms of securing the site. There are certain things we can and can't do in terms of obstructing the view because, right, these are going to be tank, no matter what they are, they're still tanks, right? And they're still large, above-ground tanks on our river, on our lakefront. So there's only so much we can do. I think, I think this council, I know staff for sure wants to do as much as possible to try to mitigate as many of those concerns for our residents and the ratepayers and the people who come to visit Oshkosh. But there are significant constraints to working with this site. I just want to make sure that's bluntly clear to those that have been suggesting a lot of different options. Staff doesn't take those lightly. We don't either, but staff doesn't take those lightly. They're not just doing things because it's expedient, because it's cheap, because it's what they want to do. They're trying to do what's in the best interest of this community and provide us with reasonable and sound ideas to ferret out and then to move forward. So I just want to make sure that those that have been emailing and calling, and I appreciate the passion for the project and the passion for making sure that we do it right, because it is, it is a once-in-a-generation or multiple-generation decision, and I fully understand that. Here's my question. I like that you provided some details in terms of, in the different shapes, the above-ground rectangular, which would make it look less like, you know, big oil tanks, in this case, big water tanks, but that's been the going theme. So I like that you provided that. I appreciate that. And it turns out, you know, getting a significant possible reduction in height, you know, nearly 11 feet, yeah, it costs about $4 million more, about 10%, 15%, but it does reduce the visual impact. You talk about higher maintenance costs. Here's my question, I guess, is long-term. What are we looking at in terms of difference? Either way, we're going to have maintenance costs. That's given. What's the difference long-term in terms of our maintenance costs on, between above-ground circular and above-ground rectangular? Because those two are, the biggest difference is the material we're using and how it's formulated, the concrete and its precast and, talk to us about that, I guess, a little bit.
Okay.
What can we expect?
I'm not sure I have a numerical answer for you. I can tell you why people move toward pre-stress concrete for holding water, and that is the quality that is, the quality control that is accomplished at the factory where the panels are fabricated. You're in a controlled setting, so you're not trying to accomplish things in the field, pouring concrete on wet days or days when the weather gets a little off-spec. Unfortunately, at this plant, there are different facilities that have concrete issues, cast-in-place concrete issues. And the city has, I think, most recently, in the last three or four years, had to do crack repairs on sedimentation basins. And the only thing that's done right now, the technology that's available, is isolating that basin, cleaning it, injecting it with some sort of epoxy, some sort of expansive material. Sometimes, in the case of joints or water stops, they need to be blasted out and completely replaced and reset. So with pre-stress concrete, you have fewer joints, so you have fewer opportunities for leaky joints.
Sure.
I don't want to bash cast-in-place concrete. I've been in this industry going on 36 years, put in a lot of cast-in-place concrete water-holding storage tanks. They are more expensive to construct because of the labor, primarily. And over time, because of how, because of the number of joints and how they crack and the kind of work that's needed to repair them. So is it rocket science to repair water-holding storage tanks? No. It's not a challenging thing. It would keep me up at night. I would feel like the project is introducing undue risk to the city if they went with the buried, double-walled secondary containment scenario. I think that's unique. It's going to pose more risk during construction. And we professionally wouldn't say, that's the way to go. So from a technical point of view, very comfortable with cast-in-place concrete rectangular tanks, but they do cost more.
If you don't mind, one follow-up, because I want to make sure it's really, really clear.
Yeah.
Professionally, in your opinion and your firm's opinion, partially buried, double-walled rectangular tanks would be a really bad idea. And I know I'm-
That's a non-technical.
And I'm a non-technical kind of guy.
Okay. That approach to design introduces more risk to the city.
Fair enough.
And you have, you have alternatives, you have lower-risk, conventional alternatives available to pursue.
Fair enough. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Excellent, excellent presentation. I think, and Mark, you can jump in here. We talked about, let me call on record as saying, I don't like any of the options, but I mean, it's, that's up to us, not up to you, but they're all pretty ugly to me. Just kind of echoing what Matt said, we're a little limited there. But we, not a question basically for you, but Mark, could you chime in, please? We talked about hiring a landscape engineer, and then as part of your presentation, you gave us a litany of reasons why there isn't some pretty green vegetation and plantings and things like that. Do, I see a real conflict here, and I don't want to build up any of our taxpayers' hopes that we're going to come up with some great landscape plan and then have it fall through in the ninth inning based on the fact that somebody says it's for security reasons, we can't have a spruce tree.
I think the idea and the intent behind the items that we addressed with all those questions was, there are certain things that are non-starters in terms of what we can and can't do. And I think Linda's done a great job of explaining what their limitations are. As long as those non-starters are understood, we can look creatively at other ideas. Do, what do we do with the facades to whatever tank we choose? What do we do with, what landscaping is permitted and what can we do? And the idea behind hiring a landscape architect is, you know, getting, as Linda put in the timeline, around April, it would be appropriate to start talking to a group of stakeholders. And I think you probably have many candidates you'd like to suggest based on the emails you've received. And we could seek input and recognize that there are certain things that we can't change within our parameters, but as long, we're open to discuss what other options are there. And I think that's what we want to do. And we'll have about five to six months, well, three months before we do one of the deadlines with the, sort of the internal stuff. So the immediate emphasis would be on internally, is there anything we can do? The tanks and things like that, because Linda and her staff, they want to be ready by July to start submitting things to the state for approval. Then the exterior stuff, we got a little more time on. And as Steve has suggested, we'd probably bid out most of that exterior work separately anyway, just because you don't have a contractor doing tanks work on landscaping.
No, I agree, but I just want to make sure we're not selling our neighbors a bill of goods on this landscape idea and then in the ninth hour say, oh, by the way, for security reasons, we can't do this. I just want to be on the record.
I think we take them through the process and just, you know, here are things we can and can't do. Within the, as long as we aren't compromising the can'ts, let's talk creatively about the cans.
Okay. And then, and I can't remember if it was a letter from Steve Hints or who the letter was from on the size of the tanks. And I agreed, I thought we could downsize the size of the tanks based on, we still have declining usage. Is that accurate? I mean, our usage, our water consumption goes down every year?
Our water usage has been, has been going down, but that was really more an issue about the pumps. And the size of the pumps was reduced from what was originally discussed.
And I'm going to get to my final point. That's not it, but there's an incident, now I'm going to throw Steve Godey under the bus because James is in here, but we just recently had an incident in the city where we lost a million gallons in a matter of minutes.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
And it was due to a contractor hitting a water main and not reporting it. And, and I want everybody to understand, these things happen. And so we lost 18% of our water supply in minutes. Is that accurate? I mean-
It was within about 25 to 30 minutes, yes.
And had it gotten any worse, we would have been on a boil advisory. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So I just, I want everybody to know these things happen a little bit more often. We obviously don't tell everybody everything, but, so I shut up about the size of the tanks. But thank you very much. I hope we can all come to some agreement on this.
Councilmember Hansen and then Councilmember Ford.
I have a question about, do we have any kind of estimate on how much it would take to level the existing underground tanks to lower that ground level of the new tanks just to make them shorter? Then we can have the round or the square, but overall, bringing the height down.
You mean of lowering the groundwater table?
So, no, the tanks that are already in the ground, which the new tanks will be on top of, correct?
Well, the existing clear wells range in depth from, I don't know, 13 to 16 feet. And they were constructed, as you know, two of them were constructed over 110 years ago. And they were set on hardpan or kind of like bedrock. So the reason why they're as deep as they are is because that's where they hit the really hard material that was hard to re, difficult to remove. So what we plan to do with the at-grade storage tanks is demolish the tops and gradually demolish the upper portions of the walls, but use those perimeter walls to the greatest extent practical as excavation support. Because a huge cost of doing any construction at the water plant is creating a safe, buried zone for workmen to work below ground and de-watering it. And because we're hydraulically connected to the lake 200 feet away, the volume of de-watered flow is phenomenal. So everything that we can do, like reusing those clearwell walls as our shoring and preventing groundwater from coming in, saves money during construction, reduces risk.
So we are taking that height down a little bit?
Correct. We're taking off the tops and the upper portions of the clearwell and reusing it as much as we can during construction and then leaving that stable, established, and then we're pouring on a material that's called controlled low-strength material. It's kind of a concrete slurry that's going to fill in and be like the structural fill that's in the clearwell footprint, but underneath the new storage tanks and pump station.
Perfect. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman Hansen. That was a, I was going to ask that question as well, and I guess just to, because I'm not bright. So to be more direct with that question.
Can I chime in?
I'm dim. Using, so using those existing platforms, those existing tanks in this process does not result in the end project being higher than it otherwise would be?
No. The, the height of the project, the floors, are set at elevation 751.5. set at elevation 751.5 because the groundwater is at 749.5.
Okay.
And we have to be a minimum of two feet above that with the floors of the finished water pump station and storage tanks.
Very, so for reference right now, the ground on top of the existing tanks is about 759. So you're looking at about seven and a half feet down to the new floor elevation.
Okay. Last question, and you said it, but I'm going to put City Manager on the spot again, because I told him I would. Just to reiterate, because there's some disagreement in the public and the message that they're getting, this project will go through Plan Commission and will go through City Council.
Yeah, and I think Linda mentioned that towards the tail end. Yeah, it always, we're the, we're in the same boat as any site plan that you see. We, we have the same requirements, and we will go through the Plan Commission and the Council before we're, we're done.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. There's, there's other reviews that have to get done, but yeah, that'll all be done.
Thank you for making that clear.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
So our goal will be, as Linda showed, February 8th, the next, the first meeting of February, we'll come back and seek some direction for what, what we talked to the PSC about at the March hearing. So that'll certainly be an opportunity for the public to, to provide additional input to Council, and so we'll, we'll look forward to that.
And Mark, what about input from our stakeholders, direct input from our stakeholders in the interim? I mean, is there anything on the schedule? Is there?
We've been, we've been taking input virtually. Everything you saw tonight was based on input, and we're going to continue to seek input and continue to welcome it, and we'll probably post another update to the Q and A's that we have. That's, that's on our Hot Topics, if you haven't seen it. We got, under Hot Topics, we've got the stuff from November and most recently. So, and Mr. Van Gompel's coming up, so I think he has something to add to that discussion.
I'm sorry, because I was listening to this, and I've been involved with, you know, water rate cases in the past, and I just wanted to reaffirm the fact that we will be doing public hearing notices, as required by the Public Service Commission, and there'll be inserts going out into the monthly water bills. So I just want to make sure that you're all, all aware that we will be doing everything we can to make the public informed of the public hearing.
Mr. Van Gompel, I'm sorry, just a follow-up to that. And Mr. Roloff, perhaps, would we also potentially be having or taking comments regarding the lifeline rate during that public hearing?
Mayor, in, in respect to your question, I, I need to remind you that it's really, we're looking at a two-step process, and the difficulty is we have to do the construction authorization first before we do the rate authorization. And we can't, as I tried to explain prior, we can't really do the rate authorization until we have the construction authorization in place, and I would defer to Linda with any additional comments on that.
Yeah. This is, that, it will not, in March, it will not be a rate application, it's a construction application.
Correct.
Which are two different animals.
Okay.
But with that point, I would, I would point out, once we know the date, if the Council goes with an alternative other than the first one, I think it'll be very important for public input to the Public Service Commission. It's not as simple as saying, "We got input from the public at our, at our meeting on February 8th that people really liked the second option," for example. It's all well and good, but I think it would be very beneficial for the public to, to participate. It could be all virtual, they can do it from the convenience of their home, but I think the Public Service Commission would want to hear from people about what they would want to see or don't want to see. I mean, that's, whether they agree or disagree with whatever Council decides to do, that public input's going to be very important, and Linda has some experience with that.
I do, and I would say that I'm speculating that the reason why the Public Service Commission did request a public hearing in March is because we have shared with the public questions and comments and the responses. So they're aware of everything the Water Utility Director of Public Works, the community has done to inform people about the project and listen to concerns and ideas.
So that's not automatic with all of these?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have citizen statements to Council. Do we have anyone registered, Jesse, for citizen statements? This is items that are not on the agenda.
We do. First is Beth Wyman.
Yes, Beth Wyman, if you can come up here to the left. And who would be after Beth, so they can get in line? Erin, yes. Welcome.
Hi, Beth Wyman, 1373 Wagu, and I want to say, first of all, I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into making these decisions for our community. Plato said, "The great tragedy in life is not setting our sights too high and missing, but setting our goals too low and succeeding." We're here this evening talking about two issues that may change the landscape of Oshkosh. These decisions change our vision, our emphasis on economic development, and have an effect on all of our community members. We seem to be in a crossroads in the city, decisions that are not made with strategic, economic, long-term implications in the forefront. At one point not too long ago, we were the "Oh, poor me" city, where we tried as hard as we could, but just couldn't be any better than our neighboring communities. Enter Pride of Place, a new city manager, and with help of so many community members, we insisted on better. We insisted on change for the good of the many. Community aesthetics and quality of life issues came to the forefront. We asked corporations to help create a new Oshkosh. We built private and public partnerships, which created opportunity for growth and community pride. We hired LDR consultants in Imma Oshkosh, who helped us recreate our downtown with a new hotel, the Leech Amphitheater Convention Center, and adjacent future waterfront plans. We lit bridges and improved the downtown facades. Through a public-private partnership with Community Foundation, we spearheaded the rebuilding of Pollock Pool, which gave families a pathway to being outdoors in a positive environment. Parks, trees became a focus. We passed several referendums, which gave our schools long overdue upgrades. All these pieces of progress helped us become the event city. Out-of-town guests flocked here, not only for our EAA, but for our amenities as well. We were so proud. Please don't just check boxes of yearly task completions that may not be entirely focused on the city's strategic plan, which highlights economic development and strengthening our neighborhoods. Of course, there needs to be a homeless shelter, but is it acceptable to put in an area which is ripe for future development? How can we minimize the visual impact of the water storage tank project? That area is the entrance to our community gem, Menominee Park, and home to the waters, which was restored to its grandeur 13 years ago. You have the say as to how we proceed with projects that impact our community, and I hope that you're always looking at the big picture when making these decisions. These proposals will affect our community forever, and yes, it is more difficult to find alternative solutions, but it is possible. We need to be a community of forward thinkers. Short-term decisions may have dire, long-term consequences. I know each of you want the best for Oshkosh, but sometimes we need to think out of the box to arrive at the best decision for the community. There's ARPA money to spend, and determining the best use of what projects will benefit the most amount of people will be a challenge. I urge you to consider the 60,000-plus members of this community when making your decisions. Mental health has become a critical issue. How great it would be if we could enhance our parks, our ice skating rinks, and other activities which would get people outside, allow families to interact, slow down, and enjoy wonderful community even more than we already do. Recently, we had a consultant come to town who recommended we develop our plaza area in the downtown, complete with retail, activities, and green space. Since our enthusiastic meeting, I haven't heard one word about the possibilities that exist. Last Sunday night, I drove by our ice rink. There were zero people there. Then I drove by the ice rink in Nina that same night. There were over 50 people enjoying the evening. It was a Sunday night. Let's make our downtown an area of activity and celebration. Please, Council, think big. Think of the 60,000-plus citizens and our visitors when making your decisions. Value the private partner, public-private partnerships, which have helped create our hub of the city in the past, and encourage them to continue to do so with your supportive vision that will help us move forward. I have full confidence, the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Scherer, and then who is registered after Erin?
The others are for specific Council agenda items.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Erin Scherer. I live at 1720 Cliffview Drive in Oshkosh. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to address the water storage tanks and pump house. I appreciate all of the information that was just shared and discussed during the workshop. I am grateful for the city staff's work on the complex project and the Council's careful attention to it. I do just want to clarify a few things, my understanding of a few things in the presentation. The city refers to the 2017 Public Information Session and that they received feedback about the exterior materials of the tanks. I have spoken to two people at that meeting, who said there were four people at that meeting, at the most six in 2017, and that they were adamantly opposed to the size, location, and plan for the project. They were told they had no choice, and so their kind of last-ditch effort was, well, maybe we can make the materials look a little better. So I just want to be clear that it wasn't like that information meeting, people were really excited about this project. And that was in 2017, so we're talking four, more than four years ago. Also, the meeting that happened in October, the Public Information Meeting, the slide presentation says there were 40 people at that. That might have been 40 people who signed in, but there was well over 100 people at that meeting, and I think those who were seated there know that the room was packed, and there were probably 40 people alone, just standing, sitting and standing in the back of the room. And I think those who were at that meeting, I think the city's hearing this, by and large, no one's too concerned about the exterior materials on these. We want them to look nice, the exterior materials. People are very concerned about the location and the size of these structures. I think that's what you're hearing. My guess is you probably haven't got a lot of comments like, "Oh, we really wish, you know, the bricks could be red instead of brown." So what I want to come and present is that I do believe we need to get a landscape architect involved. I think the setting of these is what matters. The city's shown us what is possible from engineering, what works the best, and I get that from an engineering thing, but now we have the opportunity to hire a lion's care architect and show us what the complete setting can look like. I believe we can actually accomplish two things here with the city's values. I believe that we can understand that these tanks are essential, that water is clearly a key need for us, but that we can also say the city's lakefront, our public parks, our historic district, use of the water are also essential and critical, and they're the things that we value most and enjoy. I don't believe this is an either-or situation. I believe it's entirely possible to do both. What I'm asking the city to do is to look at the entire setting and make sure that it represents the best of Oshkosh's values by providing for the needs of our citizens and preserving the beauty of our natural historic resources. I really think there's a lot of great potential for this site. I, I don't understand why we have to just look at what's inside the fence to begin with. I don't understand why we can't be creative, expand our vision, and look at that entire area. There's just a lot of potential there, and if we could get a really great landscape park architect in, he could look at the, I think it sounds like we're really considering the two first options, and really kind of show what the difference would be and what the ideas might be possible for around that setting. I believe that the storage tanks and pump house could become a backdrop for a truly special waterfront park setting. We can elevate the entire area and make it a place that our community enjoys, utilizes, and values even more. This project, as you've said, will impact generations to come. It can be something that our future citizens will be proud of. Oshkosh is worth it. Let's enhance our waterfront rather than diminish it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, moving on to public comment on agenda items.
The following speakers are here regarding item 17, Resolution 22-14. The first speaker is Tina Hafeman.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Tina Hafeman. I live at 1307 Washington Avenue. I was one of the founders of Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. I am no longer formally connected to it, except, of course, in my heart. Naturally, I completely support a new building for Day-by-Day on the proposed site. The opposition to the site has been strenuous, and I think it calls for a response. The group of people working to keep Day-by-Day from moving forward with a thoughtful, much-needed project has thrown many things at the wall, hoping something will stick so the shelter will not be allowed to be built on a lot that has been thoroughly vetted and planned for a long time. They say they didn't know about the plans, which is odd, because it's been in the works and has been public knowledge for over three years now. These folks claim to have their finger on the pulse of all things Oshkosh, but they didn't know about this, or maybe they didn't care about it. The idea that they suddenly want to use this long, empty lot between Courthouse and the railroad tracks as an entertainment venue seems unrealistic, and even a little mean-spirited to bring that up suddenly. Last week at the Plan Commission, a member of this group said the quiet part out loud when he expressed distress that he felt it was not safe to take his children, or maybe grandchildren, to events at the Leech as they might be exposed to people who don't have homes. Compare this attitude with what happens in Appleton, where their emergency shelter is three blocks from the Performing Arts Center, and the PAC often sends some free tickets over to the shelter for guests to use at performances. Dignifying all people in one's community is a concept that all communities should strive for. The group's underlying motivation was made clear to me last summer when one of them approached me right outside in the parking lot here to say that if Day-by-Day did not find a new location, they would see to it that the new building never happened. At the Plan Commission last week, it was a commissioner verbally recognized the insinuated threat that this group would work against fundraising efforts unless they got their way, perhaps siphoning off donors for other projects. Day-by-Day's beginning did not happen as a result of top-down directives from a donor group, but rather was born of a community organizing model that included a broadway, broad array of stakeholders who actually work on the front lines of poverty every day, social workers, teachers, clergy, police, and more. The first meeting we had to organize Day-by-Day, I remember that I called that meeting worried that no one would show up, and we had to bring in, and there were 50 chairs, and we had to bring in lots more chairs, and there were standing room only of people that work with people in poverty. The idea that people know best by virtue of their wealth was a misconception popular in the last century. Most thinking people understand things differently now. The approach of this group has been shamelessly elitist and adds to the perception held by many in neighboring communities that Oshkosh's inability to create an honest atmosphere of nonprofit collaboration is real and entrenched. The arrogance and hypocrisy in this case has been suffocating. If the much-needed shelter fails to be built in a reasonable amount of time, and you know this is an urgent need, this isn't a need that needs to be looked at again, planned again, this is an urgent need. If that is delayed again, everyone will know that this willfully uninformed and unfortunately powerful Oshkosh group has resorted, who has resorted to the worst kinds of political tricks in order to get their way, are the ones that delayed it. So I urge the Council to do the right thing tonight and approve this next step in the process to obtain a very appropriate site for a structure Oshkosh will be proud of. You know, I know that I have a particular interest in this. I was also children's librarian in my, in my real life, and so when I go to a city, when I visit any city, what I like to go see is their library and their homeless shelter. And I think that city, people coming to perhaps the Leech would maybe look over at that new building and say, "Oh, what is that new building?" And when someone said, "Oh, that is a resource center and homeless shelter," you know, I would say, "How cool is that? What does that say about Oshkosh? It says a lot." In the meantime, if this is delayed more and more obstructionist tactics are used, there are hundreds and hundreds of individual Oshkosh citizens and organizations- there are hundreds and hundreds of individual Oshkosh citizens and organizations who have, who have selflessly donated their money and time, made meals, done 65 loads of laundry every night, supported Day-by-Day for a whole decade, and they'll continue to do the best they can with what they have. That's how they have always done it. And the best they can has been and always will be a miracle of community. No honest person can claim anything different. I'm sorry that the Plan Commission, the City Council, and city staff have had to take so much time listening to a debate that probably should have never happened, at least not on this scale. Oshkosh had an opportunity here to come together in a meaningful consensus to solve an urgent community need, but some powers that be just couldn't bring themselves to do it. So, I thank you for your consideration and your time that you've had to spend on this. Thanks.
Thank you. And after Jason, who's next?
Bradford Lasky.
Okay. Bradford Lasky, if you might step up behind.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jason Havlick. I live at 1944 West Breeze Drive, Oshkosh, and I'm also a member of the Day-by-Day Board and our leader facilities work screen. First of all, the Day-by-Day Board wants to thank the Plan Commission, City Council, City of Oshkosh, and the community for reviewing this critical issue of homelessness. The Day-by-Day Board also wants to thank the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, community leaders, private donors, and the community organizations for their ongoing financial support. Tonight is going to be another cold night, and we will have guests on the streets trying to survive these unbearable conditions with maybe a jacket and, if they're lucky, a sleeping bag. How many more years are we going to continue to ignore this critical issue within our city? I want to remind council that Plan Commission has already approved the general, specific, and land acquisition, and City Council has already approved the general, specific, and has been aware of the acquisition site for some time. The Day-by-Day Board has been very transparent with this project. They've met with numerous times key community leaders and organizations, going back to the feasibility study in 2018 when this piece of land was originally looked at for this purpose. Since June of 2021, the Day-by-Day Board and their participants have had over 17, 17 separate meetings regarding this project with a variety of organizations to include the River East Neighborhood, Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, Oshkosh Chamber, Most Blessed Sacrament Church, City Council, Plan Commission, RDA, and other community leaders. The facilities team and I have spent the last 16-plus months reviewing options for this new location. From a cost, schedule, safety, security, and geographic location standpoint, we feel strongly that CP, AB, and Broad Street is the right location for our future shelter. I completely understand that there is opposition to this location, and I respect their opinions. However, to date, no other viable proposal has presented, been presented to myself or any other members of the Day-by-Day Board for their review. Let's be honest with ourselves. There is no perfect location for emergency homeless shelter, and we could debate this for years with little to no progress. Every location will have some form of opposition, but this land owned by the Housing Authority has been earmarked for the purpose like a homeless shelter. This particular site has sat vacant for many, many years, does not have scenic views, and is right next to the Courtowers. The Day-by-Day Board is recommending to the City Council that they approve the land purchase of CP, AB, and Broad Street for the future building of our Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. As indicated by the city, the land acquisition cannot occur until appropriate funds have been raised. During this capital campaign, Day-by-Day Board is willing to meet in good faith routinely, even weekly, with the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, the Chamber, Go EDC, or any other organizations to review potential locations. If an alternative location that meets the needs of the Day-by-Day Board is identified, it will be presented to the Day-by-Day Board for approval. However, if no viable option is approved, the project must go forward. As a community, we cannot afford another delay. So, therefore, the Day-by-Day Board urges the City Council to approve this site tonight so we can begin our capital campaign. And as stated before, we will continue to meet with the appropriate entities to ensure a successful project. Thank you for your consideration and support in taking our homeless off of the cold streets.
Thank you. Mr. Lasky? And who's after Mr. Lasky? Do we have anyone else registered after that?
Yes. Eric Spar.
All right. Mr. Spar, if you'd step up behind Mr. Lasky. Welcome.
Good evening. I care deeply about this community as I think everybody who's here, and I've lived here 37 years, and I'm glad to hear that Day-by-Day is willing to talk with the Oshkosh Community Foundation and other members about possible alternatives. I think that's a positive step in the right direction with community engagement. This should have occurred long ago, and I know that there's a feeling that that has happened, but as you can see, there's a, there's a crossroads here in terms of how we, how certain people, who, who views this, this spot in this area as, as a good spot to, to build up this homeless shelter. Community engagement, at the very least, sorry, the, the community neighbors deserve to know exactly what this is and how it will operate, who it's going to serve, and give people a chance to ask why a location with no jobs, limited transportation options, at a gateway of an improving neighborhood across from the largest outdoor music and entertainment venue in the Fox Valley, why this is the best location. The CP and Broad location will house the homeless, and that's a, that's a noble cause. We need, this isn't about should we or shouldn't we, it's about where we should do this. But it will not be the best location to get them out of homelessness. This site selection is a result of a rushed, non-inclusive process lacking community input and key partners from the start. This site selection may lead to a quick fix in the short term, but most certainly will leave a legacy of long-term consequences. Please provide the proper time for such an important decision moving forward. Location matters, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone registered after Mr. Spar?
Yes. Deb Martin.
Yes, Ms. Martin, would you come up? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Spar. I'm the treasurer of Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, and my day job is I'm a prosecutor in Oshkosh, and I'm also a volunteer at the shelter. I'm there regularly. My 10-year-old daughter is often there with me. And I'll skip the deep, the basics and get into some details because I think everybody understands generally what's going on here and that there are some things we need to zero in on. But just a little bit of a historical look back at location issues. This started when, when we first started looking at the current location at the church, there was opposition to that. Then, about four years ago, when we first started looking at the new proposed location, opposition was brought forward on that right away. The idea of that is not new, this, this location is not a new thing, even though I know it has been portrayed that way at times. And any new location that comes up, there's going to be this type of discussion, there are always going to be people that take issue with it. There's always the don't put it by me approach. And it's just different people are going to be saying it depending on where the proposal is. Homeless individuals are in the area of concern already, and this is not a population that's able to move around very effectively. I heard a story from someone I know fairly recently about someone that does not support the proposed location, and it was basically explained that they had heard that someone had moved from several states away, essentially drawn by something about our shelter. And that was a little puzzling to me because there are a number of issues facing the current shelter, so I was, I was surprised that that would, would be a thing. But also, we shouldn't be making decisions about some third-hand anecdotal type of thing when we, we have data to look at and we have experience to draw on. And we have data from our shelter that says the people that use it are generally people that are from this area. We have data from other shelters that shows if a shelter is located near where the homeless people are, that that's when they're going to use it. We need to look at those things when we're choosing a location. And this is intuitive, too, because we know this is a group that has a hard time traveling effectively. Timing, and by that I mean when a shelter can open, is an important issue, it's certainly not the only issue. But if we have two otherwise equally appropriate proposed locations, the one that would be available for use sooner is, is going to be the better choice. Now, that weighs more heavily right now because of the overall situation, and it is a crisis at this point. Realistically, we can acknowledge that changing the plan at this point would delay things, and, and that would be a negative. Doesn't mean we can't do it, but it's certainly a factor, and it's becoming more and more important as the numbers grow that need the shelter and capacity becomes more of an issue. The situation right now is a crisis, and we're turning away large numbers daily. That's especially troubling right now because it's cold. And without going into detail, this has resulted in some very real, serious medical situations for some of our guests already this season. We also had, I guess I mentioned that I'm from the DA's office, and we had a person who came to our office just this week who had been arrested. He had spoken to law enforcement, said that he was homeless, the encounter occurred at a business, and he told them he wanted to be arrested. He said that he was aware that the shelter was full, and so that wasn't an option for him. And he said, if I go steal something right now, will, will I get arrested? And the officers, I think reasonably, were talking to him, trying to convince him not to do that, and it, it went on. And then he said, well, I have marijuana on me. And ultimately, he got arrested. He, he went to jail. He's now out of jail, and I'm not sure what he's doing. But I don't mean that to demonstrate necessarily great decision-making or something that's advisable, but to say that this is a real thing. We had a situation where because of our capacity issues that would be resolved by a new shelter, we have a person who's asking law enforcement to arrest him. The needs are there right now. We can't continue to operate the way we are right now. There's been a temporary permit that's been in effect for 11 years. We have woefully inadequate facilities for food service, for bathing, for laundry. We have the serious lack of capacity. Capacity would approximately double with the new location. There have been many references to the phrase "entertainment district" as this has been discussed recently, and this lot, which now appears to be in such high demand, has not been used, as others have already noted, over a pretty significant period of time. At the Plan Commission hearing that happened recently, there, that was addressed as well, and a number of commission members weighed in on that, including Justin Mitchell, who was talking about the use of that phrase "entertainment district" and said, I think I'm quoting exactly, "That's not really a thing." This is a, a concept that has been just put out there by individuals that don't like the location, and the Plan Commission members took issue with some of that. Those that don't like the location keep talking about how bad it would be to have a shelter near the Leech or near the riverfront generally, and it doesn't seem that having the shelter there would be a problem, but having un-sheltered homeless individuals there is the problem, and we have that right now. Tom Perry of the Plan Commission spoke about what draws guests, the guests of the shelter to that specific area anyway. He talked about a few specific places, but notably the library, and said basically, as, as long as they are anywhere near that location, they are going to be going to that area that we're concerned about anyway. Whether the location is where it is right now, which is about a three-quarter mile walk from the new proposed location, or whether it's at the proposed location we're talking about, they're going to be there. The whole idea of this project is not a new thing, and to say something along the lines of, hey, we're working on a plan, we can have it to you soon, it just can't automatically result in delay, and that has been what has come up a number of times. The shelter's been investing time and resources in this for years, doing studies, looking at locations, and if there was a superior option, it would have been brought forth already. Each time things are nearing approval, last minute, there's some attempt to delay that approval. And someone can always say, hey, what about this idea? There's always going to be a suggestion from someone that maybe somewhere out there, there might be another location. And at some point, that's not a valid reason for delay. We are well past that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone registered after Deb Martin?
Tom Barlow.
Okay. Tom, if you would step up behind Ms. Martin. Welcome.
Hi. Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood Drive, Oshkosh. I'm a volunteer also at the shelter at times. These are people in critical need. They sleep on a mattress, which is basically putting them on a cement floor at night. This is, this is not a luxury place that, that people ideal towards. And I say shame on the elites of Oshkosh who want to delay once again. I stood outside today for an hour because we were recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Day on Main Street. I was darn cold. It was very cold in one hour. I encourage those of you that think that this is no big deal, that we should look some more, and we should think about this, and what about that, to stand outside for several hours in the cold here in Oshkosh. Or think the next time in the summer, when it's starting to rain, or rains for hours, what if you were a homeless person that has to be outside because our darn shelter is only open for six months? It, I'm embarrassed and ashamed to be, to be in a community that isn't caring for the least of these. And I know there are people that go to the shelter that have jobs, but there's no darn affordable housing in our city, which is a whole nother problem. And they have to work for several weeks to earn enough money to have a first month's, last month's rent. These aren't terrible people. Spend some time with them, and you'll know that these are, these are decent people, and they just need some help. So many in our, in our community, we know with 42% of our children in the school system being on free or reduced lunch, that there is great need here. Their one medical bill, their one car repair, away from, from a great need. And what, how can we say, well, I'll just go back to my nice warm house? I got my car that'll get me wherever I want to go, and not care about our homeless? There, there is not enough need. The shelter that we have, the people are doing as best they can. They're just coming up with creative ways and great programs, and it's an honor to help out myself once in a while. It's not enough, and, and it's shameful, and we need a full-time place for people to be. And why, who would build a house on CP right next to the railroad tracks? Come on. No, nobody, it, it's a perfect spot. It's been there for years, and all of a sudden now it's a big deal? No, this is delay, delay. And enough of us are smart enough to realize that. We're not gonna, we're not gonna believe that from you. And I, and I hope, the people that have spoken before have just more eloquently than I said, Tina and the others. There will be a rising when the community sees this, and they're not, there's enough of us that aren't in the elite category that, that know that we want to care for the least of these in our community. And I thank you guys for what you must have to listen to all the time. I can't even begin to imagine it. Thank you for serving our community this way.
Thank you. Is there anyone registered after Mr. Barlow?
Jeff Trumbly.
Hi.
Welcome, sir.
My name is Tom Barlow, and I've been in Oshkosh a long time. I want to say that I began with poverty programs. I helped take care of a lot of people. I was one of the founders of Advocate. I was one of the founders of the shelter that we have today. I did everything I could to try and get people off the streets. That particular historical area that we want to build a shelter at was where our courthouse first was. It was where justice was first made, and I hope that justice prevails with the City Council in allowing that place to exist, to help the poor, the defenseless, the homeless. Will you please help? Please.
Thank you.
Bill Nyman.
Bill Wyman?
Jeff will be representing us. Good evening, and thank you for-
Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address the council. My name is Jeff Trumbly. I reside at 3040 Wilderness Place in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and I am the current board president of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. On behalf of the Community Foundation Board, I wanted to state that the Community Foundation is in complete support of building a year-round permanent emergency shelter as represented by the proposed project put forth by Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. We have financially supported the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter for a number of years, as well as having raised, facilitated millions of dollars in donations to find solutions to the entire homeless continuum, in addition to spending countless hours of both our staff and board members in pursuit of results that move the needle toward addressing root causes of homelessness in Oshkosh, such as our recent partnership with Cots and Father Carr's Place to Be. in Oshkosh, such as our recent partnership with COTTS and Father Carr's Place to Be. That being said, we have as an organization would like the council to slow the process down to allow us time to fully explore alternative suitable sites that would meet both the needs of Day-by-Day Warming Shelter while preserving past economic investments, such as the Leech Amphitheater, Oshkosh Convention Center, the Oshkosh Riverwalk, and the Best Western Premier Hotel, that represents millions of dollars of taxpayers' funds, major donor charitable investments in those structures, as well as the private for-profit investors who have created jobs and add to our tax base. Additionally, we would want to allow for future investment in economic progress in this area as represented by private individuals who have expressed an interest in redeveloping a property nearby that could potentially create more jobs and further development in the proposed area of CP and Broad. With that preface, I would like to read a short joint statement on behalf of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, and the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. Our collective organizations strongly support the construction of a year-round permanent emergency shelter by the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, but believe that there may be other locations that would suit their needs and be more beneficial to the Oshkosh community as a whole. We respectfully request that the common council table the issue of the purchase of CP and Broad property so that further due diligence can be performed that would allow for a potential site that might be better and also allow the community and our organizations to rally around this cause. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any-
Are we able to, or no?
What's that?
Are we able to ask the speaker a question?
A council member would like to ask a question.
I will do my best to answer.
Yeah, and I apologize for the directness, but we've been dancing around this for months. So is it in the intent of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation to withdraw support from Day-by-Day if they choose the CP and Broad location?
I don't believe that that is what is being discussed. I believe that we want time to allow for further pursuit of potential other sites that we believe that our donor base would be more willing to support than the current location.
As long as we're asking questions, can I chime in, Mike?
Please do.
Are you committed to working with Day-by-Day? I mean, 100% all-in, working with Day-by-Day?
All three of our organizations are 100% committed to working with Day-by-Day to find a solution that is best for the entire community.
Follow-up, Mike?
It's not a question, so I'm not going to say it.
Anybody else want to chime in?
We have one more speaker under item eight, which is Resolution 2205.
Come on up, Carmen.
I'm sorry.
Carmen Scott for Jesse. Just, Carmen, can you give Jesse your full name and address?
Carmen Scott, 521 Otter Avenue, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and I just thank you for all that you are doing for our community. I'm here to share words of support regarding the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter and their quest to build a larger and significantly improved building on CP and Broad. I live on Otter Avenue, just steps away from the proposed site. As a resident of Oshkosh and River East, I am appalled that this was not approved years ago. I posted about this on social media a few days ago, and a minority of people said that the homeless people should just get jobs if they don't want to be homeless. 60% of the homeless who are guests at Day-by-Day Warming Shelter are employed. They might not have great jobs, though in some cases they have career path employment, but they are working to not be homeless. Even if someone is not working because they don't have childcare or clean clothing to wear to work, or they have an eviction, have no transportation for second or third shift jobs, or have physical and mental issues that need to be dealt with first, there is no excuse to turn a blind eye to these problems. These are our neighbors, and with inflation and COVID, things are not going to get better anytime soon, and more of our neighbors could be joining the ranks of the homeless. The rents in this town are staggering and only getting higher. There is no safety net for some people. Landlords don't take EBT cards as payment for rent. They don't take Medicaid, and they take money, period. The homeless are already here and have been for years, living under the bridge, sleeping in doorways, using the library, taking the bus, and working on improving their lives through various agencies, all in walking distance of CP and Broad. The homeless population is an epidemic that is getting worse, and now is not the time to play favorites because investors with money speak louder than the homeless. Last week, a 40-year-old man was found dead after the coldest night of the winter season. The police have not released his name pending notification of the family, if they can find the family. I don't know that he was homeless. They do say there was no foul play. I say there was plenty of foul play if the homeless had been turned away from the shelter because they were maxed out of space. They are maxed out every night during winter, and since COVID, probably every night of the year. There was not foul play by Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, but foul play for years by elected officials and others who chose to not do whatever it takes to allow the shelter to use empty land to build a larger, more efficient building so that people do not freeze to death on Main Street or anywhere else. This is not just about a place to sleep, but about meals and programs that will help our neighbors rebuild their lives and be able to be self-sufficient and have roofs over their heads. I walked my dog Sunday morning, and the wind chill made it feel like negative one. I knew it was a short potty walk, and I also knew I would be able to go into my comfortable warm home for the rest of the day. As I walked, I looked to my right, and I saw a human being on the cold ground on the lot that has been vacant far longer than I have lived here. The lot that is a perfect location for a larger shelter. The man had his belongings and blankets and was huddling against the cold. I don't know if he spent the night there or he had just moved, but I'm guessing he wasn't someone in this room right now who has the power to vote yes on this critical issue and begin changing lives. As my dog raced home in the direction we had come, pulling me along the way because he was too cold to stay outside, we once again passed the homeless man shivering across the tracks. What I thought about then was that if it's too cold outside for my dog, then it's too cold for my homeless neighbors. These are our neighbors.
And I'm sorry, we had one more person registered to speak on a different item?
Yes, under item eight, Resolution 2205, we have Shirley Robender Maddox.
Oh, is Shirley Maddox here? Oh, hi, Shirley. Welcome.
Are you limping, Shirley?
Good evening. Yes, will?
I hope you're okay.
Oh, I'm okay, yes. Shirley Robender Maddox, 1313 Jackson Street. I'm here to speak on a rather positive topic. 20 years ago, when I was in your place, no one would have come speaking to you about a neighborhood plan for approval because neighborhoods really were kind of suspect. But anyway, the city has changed, and they've realized the energy and the strength that comes to the city when neighborhoods are healthy. And so I'm coming on behalf of Historic Jackson, and your approval of the neighborhood plan, it started out as a very rocky beginning. The members of the neighborhood did not believe the city would listen, and so our meetings were confrontational. I pity the staff, but anyway, it was a beginning. And the city did listen. A safety plan was enacted that you budgeted for, and last summer, it was implemented. And so many people have commented how they feel safe once again after 20 years driving Jackson. And I think the big thing is listening. The city listened, the council listened, and that communication is so important in building a trust and in moving forward. I guess I was negligent. I spent over 100 hours working on the history of Historic Jackson. I'm not finished, so I'm hoping at some point I can come back to you with an addendum because we're called Historic Jackson, and we wish to rebuild, I guess, the stability and our reputation as a wonderful place to live. And I trust that you will be there as we come with projects that we hope you'll support. So I hope tonight you'll support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will also note, we received three emails regarding the earlier items, 2214. One from Don Nelson, supporting the purchase of the property at Broad CP. One from Molly Smeltnick, also encouraging approval of the land acquisition. And one from Sheldon Lasky, opposing this location. And those are in the record. We now move on to consent agenda. We'll take a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Mayor Paul Mary?
Aye. No items were removed. We'll move on to new ordinances. There will be no action on these items. There are three new ordinances this evening. Ordinance 22-09, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for property located at 580 South Keller Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. And ordinance 22-10, allow street parking on West Ninth Avenue from the west of the intersection with Oakwood Road to Linden Oaks Drive. And a third new ordinance, 2211, set the speed limit on Compass Way and Transit Drive to 30 miles per mile, per hour, and designate Clairville Road as the through street at its intersection with Compass Way and Transit Drive. And then we will move on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 22-12, amend portions of Chapter 14 Stormwater Management, Chapter 24 Waste Water Systems, Chapter 25 Streets and Sidewalk, and Chapter 28 Water pertaining to public construction and services and methods of payment, and create Chapter 21 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to public construction and services, methods of payment, special charges, and special assessments. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion on the ordinance, 2212. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
And Mayor Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carry 70.
New Resolutions, 22-13, approve purchase agreement with T-Wall Enterprises Development LLC for redevelopment of the property located 43 East Seventh Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 2213. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
And Mayor Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carry 70.
All right, 2214, approve land acquisition of Zero Broad Street and 400 CP Avenue from the Oshkosh Housing Authority, $150,000. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second. Okay, first by Wojciechowski, second by Erickson. Discussion on 2214, approval of the land acquisition. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been in discussions with several people over the last three or four days. I think the competing interests for this project are getting together and making some progress. Mark, what would be the harm in delaying this one meeting, two weeks?
From a practical standpoint, there wouldn't be any harm in delaying because the work is going to continue on the conversations that the groups have been having. The purpose of us getting this forward in the first place is to enable Day-by-Day to continue their fundraising and demonstrate they have a site, and that's really the issue as long as they're-
So it delays nothing in the physical process?
No, because there's still a lot of fundraising that needs to get done, but I think they want the assurances down the road that they have a piece of land as they're proposing this, and I'm putting words in Day-by-Day's mouth, but as they're raising funds, where is your location? And they can have an answer.
I guess I would have an interest in delaying this for one meeting, not three months or six months or anything, in hopes that these people can iron out their differences and their concerns. I guess I don't see any harm, and I see a lot more upside and positive. It's my goal that these two organizations or multiple organizations can get together and move this thing forward. So with that being said, I guess I would like to make a motion to carry this over to the next council meeting.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill, you and I talked earlier today about this exact topic, and you know, at the time, I didn't really have an issue with delaying it, but you know, we've had some more perspectives, and you know, I've decided to change my mind on that, so out of respect, you know, I support what you want to do, and I understand the question of, you know, what is the practical, you know, is there a practical implication? But you know, there's also an ethical implication of waiting two weeks, especially in this weather. You know, we heard that from many people, and I know that's not always the way people want to look at this issue, but it is important, and I think it needs to be taken into account that the longer we delay this, you know, there are real implications, people's lives, and for many, this could be a life or death situation, and I don't mean that to be hyperbolic, it's just the truth. I would not like to see this delayed. I'd like to see this voted on today, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wojciechowski. I don't think you're being inappropriate all there. Yeah, you probably heard from my questioning that I'm a little emotional about this. If you watch Plan Commission, you saw that. I'm just disappointed. I am just so disappointed about where we're at. I'm disappointed that a compromise that seemed to be there fell apart. I'm disappointed that the issue that unified the representatives of our business community was opposition to a homeless shelter. I understand the nuance behind the idea that it's about the land use, but we had some impassioned pleas about the future of Oshkosh today. Think about what that looks like to the outside world. They're not picking up on the nuance. They're seeing that nothing that brought us together was being against a homeless shelter. That's a bad look. It looks like punching down. That's the opposite of leadership. It irks me. I'm disappointed in myself. I'm disappointed that, you know, like my colleagues here, we've been working the phones. We've been pushing. We've been pushing for months for a solution here, and it didn't get done. It's a failure. It's a failure I take seriously. It's a failure I own. But if we can't have unity tonight, I think we need clarity. I view this as a dispute between two independent organizations. I said that at Plan Commission. I also think today that changes a little bit. This is the first time that we are being asked, as a city, to commit resources, financial or otherwise, to this project. You can say, "But Mike, didn't the city council-" You can say, "But Mike, didn't the City Council commit ARPA funds?" Absolutely not. We did not. Didn't the city pick the location? No. We asked several times for Day by Day to come and give us an overview of the locations they looked at and what their rationale was, and they provided that for us. They were transparent with us. It was appreciated. People have pointed to the 2017 Imagine Oshkosh Plan. Didn't we specify a different land use? Well, no. Read that plan. There's several ideas on there, but public and institutional uses is one of them. So, this is not inconsistent with our planning. What we did do as a council is set a goal for the city manager to address the issue of homelessness in our community. We didn't say support one project or one specific organization. We set a broad goal. I'm trying to stay focused on that. Our goal, from my point of view, is a unified strategy to address homelessness in our community. We've already voted on the land use in terms of the appropriateness in regards to our code. That's already been done. This is a procedural vote on a purchase of property. And if you can't tell, my patience is worn completely thin with the attempts to kill this project based on procedural votes. You know, I was thinking about the invocation. That's not just talk. Maybe it is just talk, but I take it seriously. And Councilman Miller was reading that today, that we work on behalf of the city of Oshkosh in trying to find the best possible outcome. It was something that Darren Birch, who used to chair the, he didn't chair the Plan Commission, he was the planning director, he used to always calm me down after an angry Plan Commission vote, saying, "Well, what matters is the outcome. What matters is the outcome." I think it's fundamentally unfair for Day by Day to have to wait two more weeks. If that's what gets this project done and makes it viable, it kills me, but I'll support that. That said, patience is gone. After two weeks, the foundation, you need to have a straight answer to that question if you intend to withdraw support from Day by Day, if they choose a different location. You've got to stop messing around. We have a responsibility to the city to deliver the resources that our city manager needs, our only employee, to deliver on the goals that we gave him. And part of that is having, you know, some independent organizations in the city that are on the same page. And if the foundation's not on board, they need to say that, not just for Day by Day, but for us. So, we know that, so we can regroup, figure out how we're going to make this work. This, having it both ways, just doesn't work. We can't have our actions and our words be inconsistent. That's fine in early phases, but we're getting to crunch time here. It's time to have some answers here. So, you know, whether this goes down, this two-week notice or not, I really hope that that offer that was given by Day by Day is taken up on, that you all can work together and get together. Because this is just, this has gone on far too long and dancing around it. I mean, perceptions are reality. At some point, this looks like a handful of people, the speaker said it better than me, but the perception is this is a handful of people that are killing a project because they don't like the homeless. I've defended members of the community and said, "That can't be right. History says that's not right." I look at the foundation's history and all the good we've done in Oshkosh. I don't believe that for a second. But perceptions start to become reality. And my gosh, we are losing that battle. So, if delaying this two weeks gets it done, gets us to the final outcome, I'm all for it. I'm fine with that. I don't think it's fair. It kills me, it hurts me to do it, but I'll do that. But after two weeks, I'm done. It's time to move forward, one way or another. If you have a viable location, it needs to be specific, it needs to come before us, and we've got to stop messing around on this. So, I'll shut up now, but thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. What you said, I don't think I could explain it more eloquently. I will echo that. It's very frustrating and disappointing. I think this has been delayed enough. It's been 16 months, it sounds like, that Day by Day has been working through this process. We've had 16 months to have alternatives and look into all of the options, and I can't support delaying this any further. So, I appreciate everyone who spoke tonight, and thank you for your work.
Actually, this goes back to the first year I was on council. First year I was on council in 2016, I was invited to join the board for Day by Day. By that following year, we had toured over a dozen buildings in the city, looking at what the other possibilities were, followed by months of planning, board meetings, phone calls, efforts. By 2018, we had arrived as a board at that location. I got to say, my stomach has churned over. I'm going to reference Councilmember Miller's words, "competing interests." If there's to be good faith collaboration, I think that horse is out of the barn because it is very divided and competing interests. My hope is that this council will not delay this, and that we will go ahead and vote tonight. And if some continued conversations result in a different path, so be it. But I will not support delaying this decision anymore. So, we are voting on the motion to lay over. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer? And Mayor Palmary? It fails due to a tie.
Right. Now, we will come back to the original resolution. Approve land acquisition of Zero Broad Street and 400 CP Avenue from the Oshkosh Housing Authority for $150,000, with the Plan Commission recommending approval.
So moved.
Already is.
Yeah, it's on the floor.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Further discussion.
Good for me, all right.
Yeah, we were. Councilmember Ford?
I wouldn't have much to say on this one. I think I already said what I needed to say, but, yeah, this is going to, I'm voting yes, we're going to move forward with this. And I don't think that that outcome precludes folks from the foundation or the business community from working with Day by Day. I, in fact, think they need to still, so, thank you.
Any further comments? Councilmember Hanson?
I hope cohesion can be achieved between the groups and the city. We all know and agree that this is a good thing. We all have our disagreements in some part, but everyone agrees it needs to move forward. It just needs to be worked on together. We are on the same side, fighting for the same thing, and that's what it needs to come back to. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Present.
Mayor Palmary?
Aye. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to wait until after the council did their appropriate deliberations. Just a point of clarification, just for my own purposes, GoEDC did, in fact, take some action. I was invited to that meeting because I am a member of their executive committee. I declined the invitation. I thought it was inappropriate for me to participate in that on something that would really be in conflict with direction from the council. So, I just wanted to be transparent about that. With that said, I can assure you that I have all the confidence in the world, in the people and the organizations that spoke tonight, that they can continue these conversations. And I'm going to be, you know, working all I can to help them pursue that. With that said, one of the things they need is time. And I do not want that to factor into your decision. What I mean by time is trying to give them the ability, because one of the things that Molly and I have talked about is the likelihood of, as this carries on, missing a season. Because the windows of opportunity to get this done, to get it through the next winter season, is closing, and we may very well lose that, not for any reason other than just the way things go. Towards that end, I have directed staff, consistent with the council's direction, to work feverishly to identify a year-round temporary facility, using whatever resources, creativity we can. I've expressed that to both of the groups. They've been very open to that. I appreciate that so much. But we've got a lot of work to do with that. I can't make any promises, but the struggle that Day by Day faced back in 2010, so it's been like 12 years now, was the perception that because we had to follow certain rules, and I remember Tina thought we were against them. And it was like, no, that's not the case. But it took us a long time to find a wonderful temporary six-month location. 12 years later, we're still dealing with that. So, I've directed staff, and I have resources from Community Development, fire our purchasing department, looking for every creative way to find a temporary facility year-round, so that the issues of the year-round, everybody recognizes we need to do that. But, and I can't promise we're going to find anything, but we're going to do that. That will give these groups time that if they need to study more, and they're going to have to agree to study more, they're going to have to do that, and that's on them. But I think we want to give them some assurances that we can get some stuff done to get the guests of Day by Day off the street and into a year-round type of facility. I'm working on that, and I'm going to continue to work with our staff, Day by Day, Community Foundation, all of our community partners. So, my long spiel here is, if you're aware of a property that we might be able to use for a year-round facility, please let myself or Community Development Director Nye Forth know. Kelly knows that we're going to evaluate it. It's got to have sprinklers in it. Sorry, if you don't have sprinklers, we need not apply. But we need sprinklers. We need a decent size. It's got to hold more than the 25 Day by Days currently going. They're proposing to go to 60, somewhere between 25 and 60. I've got creative ideas about using FEMA-type of trailers that are used for shower facilities, bathrooms, things like that. So, don't limit yourself, just give us a site that is sprinkled, has adequate exits. We'll evaluate it. If we can't use it, we'll just move on, and we'll just do that. So, that's my commitment to the council and to the folks who deeply care about this issue.
So, just to be clear, is that until the new shelter is built?
Yes, that is entirely of the intent, to work on a temporary facility that's not going to be sufficient.
Temporary year-round?
Temporary year-round, and that's the thing. So, that it gives them time that if this process gets delayed more, that we aren't waiting next winter for yet another facility. And I would love to be able to get it so that come spring, we're not tossing people back out on the street on April 15th. So, that's, there's where I'm working on, consistent with what I think council wanted me to do in the first place. So, that's, and I wanted to wait till you were done. So, we'll keep working on this and follow through.
All right.
I want to thank staff for all their work that they're doing on this, too. I know it's perpetual, but thank you, everybody.
Would you mind for a second?
Pause.
Would you mind? Since City Manager Roloff, one a little off-script, I'm going to follow suit if council will indulge. Just for a quick second, it's either now or we're going to do it when we approve his message. And if Molly and her crew wouldn't mind just listening for a quick second. Besides my conflict that I had to abstain for, homelessness in general is still a big topic, and one that I will absolutely be a part of in the discussions. The City Manager Roloff doing what he just said he was going to do is exactly the intent that this council wanted. That's exactly the follow-through that we were hoping for in its 2021 goal, and subsequently 2022 goal, is to continue being that facilitation point. We know the city of Oshkosh cannot answer the homeless issue. Government itself cannot answer this issue. It's going to take everybody in the community, but we feel that probably our best role is being the conduit, being the one who brings groups and entities together. Not necessarily being the peacemaker, sometimes being the dealmaker, but we feel that Mark Roloff is well-suited for that, and that's the intention. So, I'm thankful to hear what he's intending to do. And I don't speak for this whole council, but our goals are pretty clear. I think his intent is absolutely aligned with what we want him doing, so I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. All right, our next resolution is approve amendment for lead service line replacement policy.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gode, I don't think you were included on the email that I sent to Mr. Robbie, but I'm going to ask a question, and I don't necessarily expect an answer, but I'm hoping for one. Right now, we're going to bump up our rebate, our credit, to 2,000 bucks maximum, 50%. Right now, do we have an idea of how many ratepayers, how many homes are serviced by lead lines? And what I'm going to, you probably know where I'm going to go with this. What would it take to address that problem in the city of Oshkosh? What would it take to alleviate that?
Ballpark. Oh, yeah. Ballpark, I'm going to say we're at roughly 6,000 to 6,500 lead service lines left in the city. I don't have an exact count at this point in time. That's one of the requirements of the new lead and service comparables. We have to get into everyone's home and inventory that private side lateral in addition to the public side. So, we've got roughly 6,500 public side ones possibly left in the system. At that, if you're looking at the $4,000 on average, maybe a little bit more, you could do the math as to what it's going to take to get that done on the private side, that does not count the public side. I don't have a per-cost side of the public side because they vary depending on what's going on with the street, what the condition of the main is, what the condition of the lateral is.
Okay. That's not a small amount.
No, it is not.
That's a quarter of our parcels in this community, roughly.
Yes, and a lot of those, some of those are unknowns. We're basically forced to classify those as lead at this point in time with the unknown
You have something you want to share?
No.
It looked like you might.
Just exercising.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that, thank you.
And the replacement programs are still in place? Nothing has changed? I mean, it's...
Currently, we do not have funding.
But that'll happen again, right? Or am I speculating?
We're all speculating?
Yes.
Okay.
I feel pretty good about it, and if not, in our infrastructure ARPA package, that was one of the most unsolicited comments we received in our survey. So, I could see ARPA infrastructure money going towards this program if we don't get it. We're going looking for all these ones, but if we hit dead ends, we've got to do something. We still have 6,000 to go.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, thanks, Mayor.
And I just want to clarify, so if you have a private side lateral and you are looking at replacing it, this program allows up to $2,000 reimbursement after the fact, correct?
Correct.
So, do we have any means by which there's a mechanism to help put up the other two? I mean, upfront, is that something, City Manager, that...
I think you mean to front-load our portion, how we can do it, rather than just being a reimbursement. Is there a mechanism?
Like, how we finance, like, special assessments? Is there a possibility of using special assessment, you know, in this particular situation if someone doesn't have that kind of cash and finances it through the city?
Is there a way they don't have to float it themselves?
Right.
We do have the means in the, in the policy for low and moderate income, meeting certain thresholds, that we will enter basically a three-party agreement with the contractor and pay the contractor directly, so that those that don't have the means at that point can get the work done and they don't have to front-load it at all. Beyond that, we don't have anything in there. And Attorney Lawrence, if you can jump in, I don't believe we can use special assessments for private property improvements, is that correct?
Yeah, I was looking at you because I think you had us look at that a couple of years ago, and I...
Steve, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
We cannot use special assessments to fund projects on private property, I believe is what the determination was. So, we can't use...
Even if health plays a part in it, we can't declare an emergency, health... Even if health plays a part in it, we can't declare an emergency, health emergency or anything like that?
Not my specific expertise on that, but when we look at it-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw that out, and you shouldn't have an answer for that, but I would like to know if, Mark, you could just take a note?
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Yeah. Sorry, Steve.
No, no problem.
So how much of our CIP have we attributed, if somebody can refresh my memory, to lead service line replacement? I know that we also have the clean water drinking loan fund and all of that, but how much did we put into CIP for lead line replacement?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
We didn't put any of our own money in. We've been getting grants for our matching funds. So I don't know how that, if that answers your question.
Yes, yes.
I wasn't sure necessarily where you were going.
I didn't think we did.
We haven't put any money in. It's been grant money, right, Steve?
Correct.
Yeah. And Jessie's prior job with, working for Mr. Godey, she was working on processing those things, and I think that's pretty much, it's been all state funds or feds, you know, that way. But that's why if we don't, if we hit a dead end on these funds, I think we ought to look at ARPA money.
All right. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrow?
Aye.
And Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carrie?
All right, moving on to 2216, approve amendment to transit services agreement with Oshkosh Area School District for additional trip or route for North High School.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cowens?
He stuck around for all this. He got it.
Thank you.
Let's drag this out for another 45 minutes.
I'm sorry, whom was the second?
I was Mugrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, can you just share what this is? This, I believe, starts this week or next week?
Sure. It'll start, assuming the school board approves it, the first day of the second semester, which is next Tuesday. So just in a nutshell, we've been having issues with overcrowding, specifically from the bus from Oshkosh North, which is leading to a number of issues. One is the mayor will attest to, we've basically, we can't fit all the kids on the first bus. Therefore, there's a mad rush to get on that bus because kids don't want to wait a half hour for the second bus, which in and of itself isn't horrible if they have to wait for a half hour. However, that leads to a couple other issues, one being we can't pick anybody else up between Oshkosh North and the downtown transit center, which is a problem. And then second, we've been having a number of behavioral issues on the bus this year, and it's gotten worse, and we believe that the crowding is a contributing factor to that. So by adding a second bus that will be at Oshkosh North at the same time as the first bus, we'll be able to disperse the crowd. It'll allow us to pick up passengers on the way back, and we hope it'll mitigate the crowding and the behavioral issues as well as allow the kids to get home a little bit sooner. So it's kind of a 50/50 thing with the school district, where they'll pay half, we'll pay half. Fortunately, we have a lot of grant funding, so it will be a pretty minimal cost. It'll be a little bit challenging operationally, but we'll get it figured out.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the work on this. Definitely know, you know, at the beginning of this whole process, you know, a little couple of years ago, not all the staff was entirely enthusiastic about going down this avenue. But obviously, there's some demand and there's some need, and I appreciate you guys working together with the school district to try to find ways to, you know, to balance those needs out between us and them and also to, like you just said, get some of the children home a little faster and still be able to maintain the service to everybody else downstream from them that was being affected. So I just, I want to say thank you.
Thank you. And just to, one final note, we just finalized our ridership numbers for 2021, and we did give 86, it was almost 87,000 rides to students last year. So it is heavily utilized.
And I'd just like to say, too, that through this process, I learned that from my granddaughter who uses that route and from a foreign exchange student who's being hosted here in Oshkosh, that we have an app for that, and it's called Go Transit. And it's very simple to use for navigating those routes. And I was like, well, you just go to Google Maps and then it'll show you. But yeah, she was like, no, Nee, there's an app for that. Go Transit, folks. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrow?
Aye.
And Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carrie?
And we saved the best here for last. Resolution 22-17, approve city manager evaluation for 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief statement, I'll just read what's actually in our packet, but just for those who are at home or who are listening. City Manager Roloff is a highly effective leader who has provided steady, calm leadership during one of the most challenging times any of us have ever seen. We value his opinion and trust his judgment. We are encouraged by his highly motivated staff and their can-do spirit. He is committed to carrying out the strategic plan of the city of Oshkosh. As a council, we encourage City Manager Roloff to continue improving upon telling our story as well as connecting with lesser-seen parts of our community, to actively engage with those that may not regularly connect with the city government and its resources. The city of, the Oshkosh Common Council has completed the city manager's annual review and find he has exceeded our expectations and that his performance is more than satisfactory. City Manager Roloff continues to perform at a high level with genuine enthusiasm and a desire to keep Oshkosh moving forward. We look forward to continuing to work with him on achieving our goals and making Oshkosh a better place to live, work, and play. And with that, the 2022 goals the council has set in conjunction with the city manager are as follows. One, identify and pursue a strategy for the city to support for short-term, short and long-term solutions to reduce and end homelessness. Two, continue incorporating equity and inclusion into the day-to-day operations and structures of the Oshkosh City Government by doing the following. Create an employee DEI committee and begin reporting on approved DEI measures. And B, support DEI committee and its consultant to create the DEI committee strategic plan. Three, present funding options to begin implementation of ADA improvements as recommended by the SRF, that was a recent study, the Accessibility Audit of Oshkosh Public Buildings and Facilities Report. And finally, continue participating in State Multi-Organizational Committee on Local Government Funding, LGFC, to address Oshkosh's shortfalls in state-local funding with particular attention to the Municipal Services Payment Program, Shared Revenue, and Transportation Aids. I appreciate all of council's efforts and support during the review process. It was very much appreciated, the input and the participation in the process, and I appreciate all the efforts the City Manager Roloff has done for us in '21 and previous, and look forward to a very prosperous '22 for all of us. So thank you.
I'd like to express a special appreciation to Deputy Mayor Mugrow for handling that in a professional manner, and appreciate, as he said, everyone participating. It's been one of the more productive and effective ways in which we've worked together. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Ford?
I would just be paraphrasing you. So thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I was also just going to say, well, thank you, Mark, for all the work you've done. I mean, I've only been on here since April, but it's been great working with you. But thank you, Matt, for making this process easy. This was my first time doing the city manager review, so very easy process, and thank you for organizing it.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrow?
Aye.
And Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carrie?
Madam Mayor, I spoke too much earlier, so I'll just say thank you and leave it at that. So I don't want to push my luck.
For council discussion and direction to city manager or future agenda items, are there any future agenda items? I would like to bring up that, I would like to be introducing a potential resolution on environmental justice on a future agenda item or a workshop if council chooses to Do we have any future meetings?
I had one down. I just wanted, is it, you want to work on a resolution?
I'd like to explore that option with council. It could be a workshop, that's fine, too.
At a minimum, I'll put it for direction, or you and I can talk.
Sure.
The only one that I had on my list was, we did have our workshop last month on facilities. It seems like it was such a long time ago, it was 2021, but it's, normally we bring it back, so I will be putting that on a future agenda about, and it's kind of part of the goal that Deputy Mayor Mugrow pointed out with Goal Three, but where do we go next? And we'll be presenting that, too. The larger issue, not just the handicapped accessibility, which I think we covered pretty well with the report, but what do we do with the other facility issues? And it's, facility issues go hand-in-hand with debt management. So, you know, be prepared that that'll be, that'll be a discussion. Other than that, I don't have anything else on that regard, Madam Mayor.
All right, no future workshops other than that, okay? Councilmember announcements and statements for many of the liaison board and commissions? All right, Councilmember Ford and then Deputy Mayor.
At Plan Commission, we talked about the homeless shelter. Is that too soon? Happy to report on that. But no, in all seriousness, on the Committee on Aging, we talked about some of the scams going around our community, and just want to throw the reminder out there that the U.S. Postal Service is never going to be texting you or emailing you and asking you to click on a link. So just please be on the lookout. That one's going around right now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Long Range Finance met, we had taken a little hiatus due to some quorum issues and I think some scheduling concerns, but we met actually last week. And just want to give council a heads-up. The committee has agreed to, in the very near future, start discussions on our debt goals and seeking if they want to make any recommendations to council to consider, or at least some ideas of where they believe, some of our long-term debt goals, you know, could be. You know, right now, we had a goal, we achieved it pretty fast, getting our debt limit down to 50% of our capacity, and there might be some new goals on the horizon just to make sure that, you know, we have something we're striving for and working towards at all times. So just wanted to give you a heads-up on that.
All right. I just have one. Parks Ford met last night. There's a very, very healthy and favorable discussion over the Chief Oshkosh Monument signage moving forward, and it was a really great discussion. And then we also looked at some concept renderings for the Menominee Beach House expansion, and it was kind of exciting. Most people got real interested in looking at the historic nostalgic proposed concept. So those are highlights there. And then I just want to remind anyone who's watching that on our boards and commissions, we do have our quarterly board and commission chair meeting this week as well as an East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, Regional Plan Committee meeting. So that's all I have. And then City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things for informational purposes, and just want to share with you a few things. Number one, Mr. Mauer asked me to remind everybody that Row Park will be available for ice skating no later than Thursday of this week. Oh, yes, they put up, good, they put up the little poster. So there's one slight change on this one because last week it was, it was too cold to do the, and the ice, the ice wasn't ready and it was too cold. So we didn't have that event on January 7th, superhero night. Superhero night has been moved to this Friday.
It's this Friday. Get your capes.
Get your cape and your mask. Well, I guess we are under masks. But go and, it's going to be concession proceeds benefit the Oshkosh Area United Way. Free skate rental on free of charge Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights from 4:00 to 7:00 through courtesy of Dr. Eric's Skate Club. So certainly want to encourage people to do that. It's a great little event, and we want to encourage people to go.
And they need volunteers to help handing out skates, too, for that, for the evening.
It is. Yeah, very, very good point.
So if you're interested in helping that out, please volunteer.
So if you're, basically what that means, if you're a parent who's too embarrassed to skate, just help volunteer and help rent out the skates, and you'll look like you're doing a nice thing and avoid any embarrassment. I'm probably talking about myself. With that said, there is a slight possibility, given how cold it is, they might be able to open it Wednesday, check tomorrow, check our Facebook page just in case on that one. Tax bill printing error. I think it was appropriate that we come clean about everything that unfolded last month. There was a lot of confusion, so I just want to give you a brief update from our IT folks and our finance folks. There were some technical issues with our program that we ended up dividing our print job into two batches for the printing of the property tax bills. Because of that technical error, once we divided it into two batches, there was a little bit of human error, potential for human error. Well, guess what happened? We had human error in dealing with the two batches, and it resulted, one of our batches printed twice. So if you received two, like I did, that was one, and then the other batch that was done was delayed because we didn't discover we were, that they didn't get printed. And those, because of the manual fix we did, the county line item that says the county's portion of the tax was trimmed off of the bill, even though it was part of the bill itself, that line item detail was missing. At all times, the tax bill information remained correct in the online version. If you looked online and said, I want to see my bill, and a lot of people did that because they were, you know, getting impatient about getting their bill, they could see it online. We've done a complete review to ensure this error doesn't happen again. We're talking to the vendor to make sure that the glitch that we encountered doesn't happen again, and we want to make sure that's done in one run because the minute we split it into two, we created the potential for human error, and it was because the batch job was too big. So our idea was, well, if we split it in two, we'll be okay. Well, see what happens when, so I just wanted to explain that. I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Otherwise, I think I'll take the gentleman behind the box over there because Mr. Newman's back there, and he can probably assist me in any questions you might have.
I guess my only question mark, so I assume we have identified the problem and we're confident it won't happen again?
Yes, I feel very confident about that.
Good.
With that, I've got outstanding issues with the new year. I haven't reworded them to the council's goals that they identified in the resolution, so I'll be updating that. Happy to answer any questions you have. Just so you know, we, well, no, I'll wait, that's not on this list. So happy to answer any questions you might have about this one.
I'd love to, Mark, just point out quickly, since it came up tonight, the audience all left, but the Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Assessment, we in fact did not just forget about that. We did have a conversation about that, and that was put on the outstanding issues list, and I saw that that's due for an update on January 25th, 2022.
And I need to, you know, Amy Albright has been working very much on keeping that on the front burner. I know Ms. Nyforth has been attending meetings with that, so we'll catch up with Amy and get the latest update for you.
Thank you.
But we're working on that. Then lastly, I wish I could give you a lot more, I don't know if I want to keep this at the end of the agenda because I don't want to end the council meetings on a bummer, but obviously with COVID-19, the numbers have been just horrid. And I had a, I did a presentation, a virtual presentation to our employees today, and there were some people, you can tell the fatigue is setting in and everything, and I certainly appreciate that. And there are people asking about vaccines because I'm certainly encouraging people to get vaccines. Just a couple cases in point that I got from our friends at our local hospitals. Eighty-five, 88 to 90% of the hospital COVID patients are unvaccinated. 95, greater than 95% of ICU COVID patients are unvaccinated. And so if that's a message, getting the vaccine is certainly a way to keep you out of the hospital in the ER. And one of the things I said today to staff was, it's about limiting the spread. It's not about you individually, it's about limiting the spread, and the spread is all of us. So I know people disagree with that, and I certainly respect that, but the facts are the facts, and we'll have a lot of few people in the hospital if they're vaccinated. With that said, another fact that I thought was important, because of the volume of COVID patients at our hospitals, your typical wait in the ER is five to 15 hours. patients at our hospitals, your typical wait in the ER is five to 15 hours. So that's the type of thing. Now, if you come in with a heart attack, they're pushing everybody aside, but if you're in there to get a COVID test or something, plan to bring a couple magazines, because you're going to be there for a while. So that's the whole thing, and, and Mr. Geren has, you know, emphasized, his staff's emphasized, you know, it's vaccinations. We're back to doing the vaccinations. The testing is a challenge, and, you know, there's a place on Washburn right between Rogan's and Mine Shaft that does them as well, and you can get your tests done. But the numbers are up, we know that. The school district extended their mask mandate basically through the end of the month, so we all recognize. Now, what I've seen from the numbers that Data Care is regularly briefing the business community, and I'm attending these meetings, the, the numbers they were tracking a month ago where Omicron's going to hit has pretty much been in the target. So cross our fingers, by the end of the month, we'll be over this. I have not made any decisions in terms of February, but for example, community development needs to send out notices to tell people, we got a meeting and we're going to be talking about Project A, and we got to tell them if there's, if it's, you know, what the rules are and everything. So the Plan Commission so far is still going remote, or virtual, excuse me, but we got to decide if we're going to keep the mask mandate going. I suspect we will, but I'll be reporting that to you at the next meeting.
And do you know, by chance, how many of our board and commissions are meeting in person versus virtual?
I am going to put on the spot the gentleman behind...
I'm sorry, I should have asked you that earlier.
Because I think, no, that's okay. Jake's back there, and I, if Jake, if, you got a rough idea?
I would say probably more than half. Some of that worst person have decided to go back virtually for the next couple of months and decide that more than what they'll do.
So for the studio, for the folks at home, Jake said about half of them are, but they've been leaning towards going virtual more, so, and I think that's just reflective of what's going on currently.
Okay, thank you. All right, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.